I'd like to call the October 9, 2014, meeting of Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Newton.
Here.
Mr. Potts.
Here.
Mayor Hallman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
First order of business are council minutes from the meetings of September 8, September 11, the special meetings of September 6, 2014, for the city council retreat, and the September 11, 2014, community workshop. Do we have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council approve the minutes for the September 8 and September 11 meetings, the special meeting of September 6, 2014, city council retreat, and the September 11, community workshop.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Walton?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Potts. Mayor Hallman. Aye. Vice Mayor Fryland. Aye. Mr. Foster. Next order of business is matters of special privilege, and today we have an Excellence in Service to Williamsburg Award. This is a particularly important award for the city and city staff because this award recognizes one of our own for excellence in service to Williamsburg, and it comes from the colleagues in city staff, so it's very important. Today, we have an award for excellence to Wendy Evans. Wendy, if you would meet me at the podium.
Thank you.
I'm going to read this, and then let you say a few words, and then we have a plaque for you as well. I'll read the proclamation. The city of Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing Wendy Evans for excellence in service to Williamsburg. Wendy Evans has served the city of Williamsburg with dedication and compassion for nine years as the social work supervisor for the Department of Human Services. As a working supervisor, also carrying her own caseload, she has assumed multiple responsibilities within the department overseeing child protective services, the Comprehensive Services Act for at-risk children and their families, and all juvenile and domestic relations court cases. Additionally, she guides and supports the youth and family services coordinator and ensures seamless interaction between child protection and community service functions. Wendy is a highly motivated professional, a team player, and an exemplary role model for both the human service department staff and city residents served by the department. She has a determined work ethic and a true heart for the people she serves, bringing hope and light into lives in distress. Wendy Evans is hereby recognized for her commitment to excellence in keeping with the best tradition of public service in the city of Williamsburg, dated day October 9, and signed by me as mayor and Jack Tull, the city manager. Wendy, congratulations.
Sure. I feel very fortunate to work for the city of Williamsburg and to serve its residents, but I wouldn't be here if it wasn't the incredible team we have in the Human Services Department. They challenge me and motivate me on a daily basis. But I want to thank council and other leaders for taking the time to recognize and support our department's hard work and efforts in building a stronger community and a healthier community. So, thank you again. I'm very fortunate to be here. Thank you.
We have a proclamation, and we have a plaque for this.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for all your good service. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public hearings, and today we have one, and this is a time for the public to comment on the goals, initiatives, and outcomes for the 2015-16 biennium. Jack, would you like to begin?
Yes. Just to say a word or two about where we are in the process before we open up for the public comment. We now have a set of the first draft of goals, initiatives, and outcomes for 2015 and 2016, and we're just going to show you a little bit of what's in the document. This is obviously to send out with today's agenda, also available online on the website where folks can go in, review this document, and make comment back to the city. But what we've done, taken the input, we've had a series of meetings since June that council has been engaged with all of those, and I won't run through them, but we put in the memo, all the attachments of all the input that has come into us over these past four or five months that we've been working on this to lead to this initial draft. The goal statements are similar to the ones that we had two years ago, but not entirely the same. There have been some suggestions for some improvements, and you will see that, particularly in Goal 1 and Goal 2. And then we go through, and as you can see, Jody's just scrolling down, what we've got in the document now, and between, beginning with the character of the city. In each one of the eight goal areas, in addition to the initiatives, there are also the outcome measures. This has been a work by departments throughout the city, led by Phil Serra, to pull together what are our best measures that we have under each of these major goals for outcome measures. And so you'll see what we have. In some cases, the latest data goes through FY14, in some cases FY15, if we have it. So you'll see that as you peruse the document as well. We're actually ahead of where we were two years ago in having that ready at this point rather than several weeks later. And finally, you've already seen it, but the National Citizen Survey results for each of the goal areas that came out of the National Citizen Survey, which was done in May of this year, compared back to the three prior times that we've done it over the last eight years. So that's what's in the document, and encourage everyone to take some time and peruse it, particularly the areas of their particular interest. So that's where we are.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. Any questions from council before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing. I have two speakers' cards, and anyone else who wishes to speak will be allowed as well. And when you come to the podium, would please state your name and address. The first speaker's card I have is Ron Kirkland. Ron, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Hallman, and members of council. I'm Ron Kirkland with the Hotel Motel Association here in Williamsburg. And today, I just want to thank you for such an inclusive and open process for the GIOs. Going back to the workshop that we had in June, we had the interactive survey recently. It's really been kind of a pleasure to work with everybody, and everybody's been very sharing and accommodating with their time. Chairman Florakis and Chairman Gilman have been really great to deal with, have had conversations with them. It's been a nice process. We look forward to helping the city any way we can in achieving your goals for 2015 and 16, and really just thank you for including us and letting us be part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker's card I have is Stephanie Weber. Stephanie, welcome.
Thank you. Just want to echo the predecessor's comments that definitely appreciate the transparency of this process. I reside at 222 Thomas Nelson Lane, and I am one of two city representatives on Head Back, so obviously my comments are not surprising to any of you, going to be focused on the transportation section. And as a whole, I really just want to commend all of you for the approach in becoming multimodal. I think that that speaks to a number of issues that will ultimately benefit the city, not only transportation as a whole, but also economic development, as well as the health and well-being of citizens and visitors alike. When I look at the draft at this point, I really see a prime opportunity for us to develop what I term an active transportation plan. We have always had, not always, but you know, since I've lived in Williamsburg, we've had a regional bike plan. An active transportation plan just kind of broadens that a little bit more, certainly incorporates pedestrians into the process, and it just gives us a complete transportation approach, you know, makes that connection to transit, et cetera. So it just, you know, again, moving toward a multimodal approach. Such a plan really is data-driven, so when I look at some of the graphs and charts in the draft GIO, looking at an uptick in some of the injury data, it'd be nice to have a sense of where those are. An active transportation plan would map some of those critical areas. I think we probably know where some of the hotspots are, but that would just be a very, you know, concrete approach to identifying what the critical areas are. In addition, I think it's high time that we really have bike ped counts. We do self-reporting, but I think that it would be very interesting. I've had the unique opportunity to live in multiple sectors of the city over the past few years, and being one who likes to be out on my bike and walking, I've had a firsthand approach to seeing some of the, you know, biking and walking patterns throughout the city. And I can tell you where I live now, Richmond Road, the active transportation activity along that corridor is not really on our radar, but I can tell you it's heavy. You know, the use of sidewalks by bicyclists is huge, and that's not on our radar at this point. So I think that having bike ped counts would really illuminate current traffic patterns by bikes and pedestrians at this point. I'd also think it'd be helpful to have a survey of accommodations currently around our transit stops. This is part of that first mile, last mile approach, recognizing that those who are going to use transit are really going to be residing within, you know, we say first mile, last mile, really realistically, within a half mile. So if we've got good bike ped accommodations within a half mile of transit stops, we're going to see increasing numbers of folks look to transit as an option to get around the area. And, you know, you've mentioned this in the document at this point, but having that gap analysis, so as we envision the network, looking where the gaps are, you're doing a great job of that at this point, and so continuing along those lines. Just a couple things to point out. When we look at particular projects, particularly Monticello Avenue widening, we talk a lot about the need to address, you know, the connection between Newtown and the college, but we're also talking about widening up to Richmond Road. And I just encourage us to really make sure that any plans accommodate all transportation modes in that corridor. So, you know, I know we're going to widen it, make sure it's accessible to bikes, peds, and transit at this point. So, you know, again, as, you know, commend you for the job that's being done, and just, you know, continue to work toward that multimodal approach. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Would anyone else like to address the GIOs at this point? Please come forward and state your name and address. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and council members, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Gabriel Maury. I'm a student at the College of William &amp; Mary, the Student Assembly Secretary of Transportation, and one of the student co-leaders of the William &amp; Mary Bicycle Initiative. So I guess you can say my address is 110 Saddler Center right now. I am an active member in the community, though, and registered to vote here, so I consider myself a member of Williamsburg. The Bicycle Initiative is a group of students, staff, faculty, and outside members who are dedicated to creating a cycling-friendly William &amp; Mary and tying in the city's exemplary cycling infrastructure in with the college. I cannot speak on the institution of William &amp; Mary, but I can speak as a student there and as the student representative to the Student Assembly. And I have to say, students are very excited about the bicycle projects that the city is doing. I applaud you guys for your support of continued bicycle infrastructure and pedestrian infrastructure. I have a lot of friends who live off campus or have to get off campus to different housing areas, developments, retail areas, by bike and by foot, and over the past couple of years, it's gotten so much easier for people to be able to do that. I highly encourage the council to look at widening the bike lanes and putting in new bike lanes along Richmond and Jamestown Road when those come up for repaving within the next couple of years. And I'd also love for us as a student body and as the students of the Bicycle Initiative to be able to work with the city to help create a comprehensive plan for all of Williamsburg, not just, you know, dividing us into town and gown, but coming together as one community and encouraging safe, responsible, and active cycling to get around and for appropriation in the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the GIOs at this point? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion, although we do have later in the meeting, under Item 5C5, a more detailed discussion with the chairs and vice chairs of the Planning Commission and EDA. So is there anything at this point anyone wishes to say? If not, we'll just hold the discussion until later in the meeting. And thank you all, all of those that commented. We really appreciate that input. Our next agenda item is reports. First is the monthly financial statement. Jack, anything in particular you want to point out?
Just to point out that we're now through the first quarter of the year. We, our total revenues are at, stand at 5.5 million brought in, which is just maybe about $100,000 or so above where we were at this time last year. But as we find every year, we have spent about 2.2 million that we've taken in, but that's because we've taken in no real estate tax money yet. But that will start in the next month or two, and you'll see that transfer from surplus numbers swing. So nothing else to add at this point? Be happy to address any questions, and of course, Mr. Serra is here, the Finance Director, as well.
And any questions? Not the next monthly department operating reports? Jack, anything?
Just would like to highlight the fire department's open house this Saturday. They're gearing up for a big event. They'll have their station tours, equipment demos, displays, fire safety with the safety house. You can come and get your car seat inspected for kids. The CERT program will be there, free food, big day, so come on out Saturday.
And I think council encourages everyone in the community to take this opportunity because we have one of the finest fire departments anywhere, and Chief Dent, thank all your people for doing this open house. I know they're putting a lot of effort into it, and we look forward to it. Thanks. Next order, any questions on department operating reports? If not, city manager reports. The first is the $200 augmented fine for Governor Berkeley Road, proposed Resolution 14-13.
Yes, Public Works Director Dan Clayton will give this report.
Mayor, City Council, as you know, we, which includes the city manager, the police chief, and myself, have been working with the residents on Governor Berkeley Road on traffic calming measures. We received a petition of 80 percent of the residents requesting traffic calming initiatives. We have met with the residents on site, and we presented them a handful of traffic calming initiatives, and the residents came back with requesting two of those. One was designating the street as an augmented fine street, which carries up to an additional fine of $200 for speeding, and the other measure was to install speed humps. The augmented fine designation must be approved by council by resolution in accordance with our Ordinance 1596. The ordinance sets the requirements for qualifying for the additional fine. Essentially, it must be a residential through street, 25 miles per hour, and petition from the residents. The staff will take that information, review the street, and we actually had a complete study of skip with farms done in 2008, and Governor Berkeley was, met the criteria for a cut-through street between Long Hill Road and Richmond Road. And so staff has prepared, since the road meets all the criteria, and we've met with the folks, and we're recommending that we do that designation, and the council passed Resolution 1413. And once you, folks do approve that, Public Works folks will put the appropriate signs and the, when found that we have, I think there's 10 other streets where we have this designation, so it's be the 11th street.
Dan, thank you very much. Any questions for Dan at this point?
Just one question on the process. Mr. Clayton, previously, Mr. Whitley has shared with council petitions that he circulated within, I guess, the residents of Governor Berkeley Road, that their concerns about speed issues and cut-through traffic. Is it, and this isn't about this particular situation, but just in general, for anybody else who's considering this in their neighborhood, is it sufficient for the residents to put together a petition and submit it, or is one administered by city staff, and then somehow each resident is individually contacted? What's the normal procedure?
We've done it both ways. If they've asked for help on drafting one, we'll draft a petition up, but they can present their own petition, so.
Dan, you mentioned one of the things the neighborhood asked for was speed humps. What was the determination? Obviously, it's not determined.
Right. We're consulting with our traffic consultant, Kimmlyhorn, to take a look at that. There's a lot of driveways out there, intersections, whatnot. We just want to make sure we're getting it right. It's not just as simple as just going out there and throwing up a couple of speed humps. There's some criteria and some things you've got to look at, so we're, we want to make sure that this thing works right.
Gotcha. Okay. So it's something we're thinking about.
Yeah, we're definitely, it's in the throes, yes, sir.
If that's pursued, does that take city council action as well, or can that be done by citizens?
We have, I don't think we've, generally, we have a policy on speed humps, and...
The policy does bring it back to city council, so yes, you will see that, and so we'll have the engineer's recommendation as to what can be done there. We'll have a staff recommendation of what we think would be workable and not workable. And then also, we have a petition from the folks right on Governor Berkeley, but this is something that affects the entire neighborhood, so we'll want to make sure the word is out so that everyone has a chance to know this is being considered, and so all that will be done. And just when we come back to you, we don't know whether it's going to be December or, I don't think it'll be November, but something in that timeframe, maybe January, but we'll come back to you when it's ready.
Terrific. Thanks. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I will move the approval of Resolution 1413.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Mr. Newton.
Aye.
Mr. Potts.
Aye.
Mayor Hallman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Next city manager report is the fiscal year 2014 School Year and Spending Plan. This is proposed Resolution 14-12. Jack?
Right. Finance Director Phil Serra will give the report.
Phil, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hallman and members of council. The current school contract between the city and the county provides that an operating surplus of the joint school system be returned to the localities for future appropriation unless the spending plan for those funds is approved by the localities. In August, the school's estimated operating surplus at just over 3.8 million for the year that just ended in June, which is FY14. School board adopted a spending plan of about 2.9 million of that, with the residual close to $1 million to be returned in total to the city and county. A memo from the former school CFO is included in your agenda packet, and that provides greater details of their approved spending plan and also the components of the operating surplus. City and county staffs have worked together and are recommending that the spending plan be approved in a lesser amount due to revenue shortfalls the localities have experienced in state sales taxes for education for both FY14 and 15. The amount of funding to be retained by schools and appropriated by the governing bodies totals as two components, $1,020,000 for replacement of nine school buses, and another $729,000 for classroom technology refresh, which was included in the school's adopted budget for the current year but was not funded. The technology refresh is part of the school's five-year capital plan, and as described in the school budget, it includes student computers, teacher laptops, and classroom upgrades, so it's part of a five-year plan. Okay? And the total amount to be approved by the localities is $1,749,000. City's portion is 9.54%, so the city share is just over $166,000. The amount that would be returned to the city is right at just about $200,000. Proposed Resolution 14-12 would appropriate the city share of the recommended size spending plan and would be effective when the County Board of Supervisors approves the corresponding resolution, which is on their meeting agenda next Tuesday for consideration. Pat, I'll try to take any questions.
Terrific. Thank you, Phil. Any questions?
If I may. Mr. Serra, if council approves this, then it is, the approval's contingent upon James City County Board of Supervisors similarly approving their plan. What happens if there's a difference of opinion?
Well, I can answer that. We will come into accord, and that's under the agreement. Obviously, we can't be appropriating different amounts of that share. So based on our discussions at this point with the James City County Administrator and Finance Director, their recommendation will parallel this recommendation. If their board takes another direction, then it will need to come back here, and we'll have to see where we are. But at this point, we can tell you that the staffs are aligned, and we can't tell you what the board will do.
Okay. Thank you.
Done.
I guess I'm comfortable with the recommendation, but do we have any, have we had any discussion where we would store that extra $190,000, some of the $200,000? Are we going to set that aside for future capital projects at the school? Do we have plans for that?
Sure. It will fall into the same category as the cities. Any residual we have from the prior year, it goes into our general reserve funds, is subject to being appropriated for any purpose the council so chooses. Generally, that's for capital spending, and that could be for school capital spending, which we know that's in our future, as well as city capital spending.
And even, if I may, even if it's not earmarked specifically for capital spending related to school system needs, you feel fairly confident that we would need at least $200,000?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Great. And I'll take it. Motion for action, then.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the council-approved Resolution 14-12, the fiscal year 2014 School Year and Spending Plan.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Hallman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fryland.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
And Jack and Phil, thank you very much for all your work on getting to this point. We appreciate it. Next report is the legislative issues for the 2015 General Assembly. This is proposed Resolution 14-14.
Yes, Deputy City Manager Jody Miller will give the report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council. Before you today for consideration is a draft agenda of the city's 2015 legislative priorities. You'll see in this draft, we have identified eight legislative priorities and have organized them under three sort of topic areas. I'm going to spend a few minutes just reviewing and will detail each one of the priorities with you. So as I mentioned, they're divided under three topic areas. The first is good government, the second is transportation priorities, and the third is state and local partnerships. We did that based on the discussion and guidance that council provided us at the September work session. So looking first, under good government, first is redistricting reform. This is an issue that council took some specific action on at your August meeting when you approved Resolution 14-11, but really speaks to the issue of Williamsburg supporting redistricting reform for Virginia, both at the state level and federal level, and urging the General Assembly to take action during the 2015 session in order to make sure that that constitutional process, which was just required to happen, occurs before the next redistricting happens in 2021. The second item is under the broad area of tax policy reform. We've identified two in particular that are important to the city of Williamsburg. The first one looks at transient occupancy taxes and sales taxes, the cost of the room paid by the customer regardless of how they make their reservation. This is one we've had on our agenda for several years. The second is concerning business professional and occupational license or B-Pole reform, and to make sure that if anything happens with that, it's in a revenue-neutral way. The second category looks under transportation priorities. The first is Interstate 64, urging the General Assembly to continue to make the widening widening with aesthetic sensitivity. This has also been an issue on our legislative agenda for a while. The second item under transportation priorities is passenger rail on Virginia Peninsula. The city's supporting the Virginia's for high-speed rail vision to expand and improve service along the peninsula, increasing the number of daily trains to six, also supporting state investment for that rail infrastructure so that we can really start reducing the travel times. That trip from Williamsburg to Washington, D.C. is under three hours. The final category is state and local partnerships, and we've got several under, under this area. The first is tourism promotion, very important not only for the city, but our destination as a whole, continuing to urge the General Assembly for greater investment in tourism promotion within Virginia, and specifically investing more on the historic triangle and taking what they're seeing as part of that revenue and investing it back in tourism promotion statewide. Second item looks at financial impacts on city government. We include this item to remind our delegates and senators in Richmond about those items that have the greatest financial impact on the city of Williamsburg when they're dealing with budget issues. It includes everything from education, public education for our schools and funding for the regional library, to transportation, that's the urban system allocation for street maintenance, 599 funding for public safety, support for our regional jails, for our human services, everything from the Health Department to behavioral health programs to support for social services and our Human Services Department, as well as mandated officials, which, those are the officials mandated by the state that can be joint constitutional officers shared by the county and both the city. We've included two more sentences under this particular area that speak to more sort of general approaches to, to funding specifically state-initiated services and programs. And we've included, as an example, the line of duty disability benefit that's provided to public safety, that if those types of programs and services are initiated by the state, that they should be funded by the state and not given to the local governments to fund. And then just more of an overall statement that local funds should not be used to cover any shortfalls in the state revenues. We've all heard about the revenue projections and how there's going to be a shortfall in the state budget. It's still unclear how much that's going to really directly impact the city, but more importantly, the revenue projections, that shortage should not be pushed down to the local governments to cover those additional costs. Next item looks at cost of water quality. The city supports the allocation of $50 million in the state budget to support the stormwater local assistance fund, which assists localities to implement the urban stormwater management programs as described in the Virginia's watershed implementation program. And the final item was at the request of the College of William and Mary. It just states the city's support of reinvestment, state reinvestment into higher education so that it supports the William and Mary Promise, and also supporting the development of an art center, which is the college's next major capital project. We provided this draft for council's discussion and guidance today. Based on the discussion that council had at the September work session, our recommendation to council is if you'd like to specifically highlight an issue or stress an issue, what we can do is when we send our agenda to our legislative delegation, we will highlight that issue in a cover letter to each of our senators and in our delegate. So our recommendation today is approve Resolution 1414, which approves this priority. After council discusses this, and if you approve the resolution today, we will forward all this information to our delegation, and we'll work between now and the beginning of the General Assembly session in 2015 to schedule a time for the council to meet with our delegation. That's all I have for you this afternoon. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy. Any questions, comments, discussion?
I do, but go ahead, Mr. Pauls. He looked a little more angry.
No, no, I was just, I was leaning forward in preparation of all the wonderful stuff you were going to say. I think I'm pretty satisfied with most of it. Interstate 64, still, I wonder if there isn't more work that we could do there. I know we've talked about it in the past about trying to find federal dollars to help expand 64. This is not just an issue for the city of Williamsburg, but all the lower peninsula, with all the military installations and everything that happens down there. You would almost think that it would be a priority for the federal government to step in. And then just from an evacuation standpoint, it has to be done sooner than later. And so, you know, so is there language that we could tie into this that gets the General Assembly to, I don't know, put pressure on the federal government to bring some of that money in? And I guess what got me thinking about this, I read an article recently that the federal government is, is spending their money down in, around Myrtle Beach to help enhance some of the road systems down there. How do they get that money and the peninsula doesn't? And so I don't know how to write whatever that is that I just said, but it just seems to me, you know, how do we tap into that federal dollar? And can we ask for that somehow?
If I could, the, the allocation of where the federal dollars that are, that are available that come to Virginia end up being prioritized within Virginia as a function of both what is done in prioritization by individual TPOs, whether that's Hampton Roads or Richmond throughout the state, and also ultimately what happens through the Commonwealth Transportation Board, which is heavily, of course, influenced by the governor and the current administration in terms of where they want to see those federal dollars go. I think that what this one really gets to is that Hampton Roads is focused on the 64 issue in, in a more meaningful way than we've seen in the last 20 or 25 years, in terms of taking the dollars that, that are available within Hampton Roads and now putting it in that direction. And we're, we're going to see over the next four, five, six years, the results of that. But what we're not seeing is where two TPOs need to work together to prioritize, which is the section between Richmond, working all their issues, Hampton Roads. No one is really looking at the link between the two and, and thinking about what happens once 64 leaves the Hampton Roads District, in other words, outside of James City County. And that's where I think we need some legislative help. We need our legislators to start talking to Richmond legislators, putting attention, spotlighting that issue at, at VDOT and with the Commonwealth Transportation Board, and ultimately back to the TPOs, because it can't happen within one of the TPOs. It's got to come with statewide leadership. So I think that is the mechanism by which you eventually will see federal dollars flow to this versus something else in Virginia.
I would add to that, that there's been a very active role being played by business leaders in Hampton Roads, and they're connecting with business leaders in Richmond. And I think that's another mechanism that we're beginning to pursue to, to, to put this closer to the, to the front burner. But it's, it's a, it's a difficult issue because it does fall between the cracks in the way that the sort of transportation planning is done. But I think it's incumbent to us to make sure that crack is closed.
Yeah. No, I don't, I agree with that, and thank you for this comment. So I just wonder if somehow we couldn't emphasize the, the need, you know, to partner with the state and the federal government to find funding for this.
That, that may be something we can do in the cover letter to, to legislators and sort of flesh that out a little bit more than we can in, in this list of priorities.
And to the underlying concept of the state putting pressure on the federal government, I don't know if that's akin to Williamsburg putting pressure on state government. I know how effective that is. But in all the explanations that we've received on transportation planning and funding for these road projects, the one advantage that this area seems to have is the additional funding that's now available because the state allowed us to have the mechanism to create these extra revenues that the federal funding can match. And that is, that is one benefit that not every area can bring to the table when they're appealing for federal dollars. It's not just the locality saying, "Federal government, we want you to spend money here. We're going to participate in this, and we want you to support what we're doing." So the more we do that, and the more we can get those local dollars directed towards this stretch eventually, I don't think it's going to be the next priority. But the more we can generate that interest, then it seems the more likely we would get that supplemental federal support.
And that, that's the work that needs to take place right now, both within the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization and within Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission, that, that they, they are beginning to think long-term, you know, 20, 30 years down the road, and, so to speak. And, and that's basically, we need to make sure that this is on that agenda for, for those future, future dollars.
Go ahead. Just, I just want to emphasize on the, and Mr. Tuttle, correct me if I'm wrong, the financial impact on city government. What we're really talking about here is not new state money coming to the city of Williamsburg because we want more of the state's, or a greater share of the state's pie. This is money that either was promised in the past or was the, provided in exchange for some other, like the 599 funding for the moratorium on annexation. And so these are state promises that haven't been fulfilled. So what we're asking the state to do here is just stand by their word. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's been erosion in every one of these areas, some greater than others, in terms of where, where state funding has diminished as a percentage of local funding. And, and we've seen it in every area that's up there. So as the hard times have hit, the states cut back, the localities, some of these things are so essential to us that we've had to fill the gap. And that's the issue.
Can I mention one other issue that, I'm not suggesting we include here, because I just don't think there's time. And we, I would appreciate more background information before putting it forward, something that should be added to this, a list of legislative priorities, but maybe something we could talk about if we have a small piece of time in our winter retreat. And that is a greater understanding of the restrictions or guidelines that are imposed upon the investment managed by VRS, and some explanation as to why the results that they're able to derive from the funds under their management are so, are the results are so disparate from what anybody could do in the private sector, investing in an index fund, or what any number of other private institutions do who have very conservative investment policies because they're investing for the long run. But the VRS numbers and their projections are all seemingly always well behind what happens. And I can appreciate that they have other constraints that they operate under. I would just like to understand those better. When we asked VRS, the explanation was, "Well, we have to be conservative because." Well, okay, but are those the right constraints? And who puts those constraints on VRS? And is the whole model working the way it should? Because this isn't just about how somebody's managing an investment portfolio. That's a cost that comes back to the localities. It's imposed upon the employees of the city, and then it becomes a burden for the residents, not only in Williamsburg, but across the Commonwealth. And I might be missing something, but we're doing a terrible job. And I'd just like to understand why that is and how that gets changed. And maybe it can't be, but I just like to understand-
Terrible job in the sense of the return on that.
Yes. Particularly, and I know you have to be careful about managing the swings in market volatility, and you don't want to go too far one way or too far the other. But in a period of time over the last four years, where returns have been really incredible, I just, I haven't seen the same, even, even anything close to that from VRS. I'd just like to understand why that is.
Well, I think it's important to understand that because, you know, one can easily see that, you know, if there's a gap in, in, you know, keeping at it that 100%, making sure that's fully funded, all the, all the state has to do, or VRS has to do, is go back to the states and we, to the local community, and then we have to put more money in. Kind of takes, takes the onus off of earning revenue on the investment.
And, and some of this may have been contributed to by the state's period of time in which it was not contributing to VRS, but I would, I would just like to get a better understanding of the total model.
I think the question for us, and Mr. Serra and I can talk about this, is who should we ask that question to? I think if we, we want, if you go to a certain level within, you're not going to get an open discussion of that, that question of investment policy.
We tried that, yeah.
So I think the question is, who do we ask? And let us noodle on that a little bit.
And I, I fully meant, I might be completely off-base, and there might be 10 good reasons why returns are the way they are. I would just think it's incumbent upon us to explore that a little bit more and understand better.
Well, you'd think they would have given us the 10 good reasons when they were at our meeting.
We haven't asked the right person.
Have to ask the right question to the right person.
Right.
Yeah. If you and Phil will pursue that, we could either do that on a work session in some future date or at the retreat.
Our last meeting, where we discussed the legislative priorities, you said, "It's always good to have things in here for when they heat up." So the court decision regarding Congressman Scott's district is just the type of thing that will heat up legislative priority number one, nonpartisan, we didn't, point will take.
Anything else?
Nope.
No, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the council-approved Resolution 14-14, supporting certain state and local legislative priorities.
Do we need to mention anything about the cover letter and the highlighting of?
Second. Ms. Watson, you call the roll, please.
Aye.
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 Our next report is on the revised sanitary sewer consent order.
Yes, sir. Project Manager Ralph Patterson, where is Ralph? Will give this report.
Ralph, welcome.
Hey, welcome, council. What you have for you is a revised consent order that we, I guess, other localities have looked at, and they've agreed to approve it. In February of this year, council approved a MOU between the city of Williamsburg and HRSD, and what that did is place more burden on HRSD to address sanitary sewer spills. Upon doing that, it requires us to make a revision to the original consent order that, that the city approved back in 2007, and based what you have here is a, you know, revision to that consent order. And like I said, the other 14 locale, well, 13 other localities have looked at it, and they, they agreed to it. Virginia Beach passed it, I believe it was yesterday afternoon or last night.
Thanks. Any, any questions? This is something we've talked about numerous times, and we've known this has been coming, but this is, I think, a lot of work by staff, not only our city staff, but staffs of other communities in this area have gone into this, and I think we've gotten to a place that, that works for everyone. So Ralph, thank you for all you've put into this. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that city council authorize the city manager to execute the revised consent order governing sanitary sewer improvements in Hampton Roads.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 And Jack and Ralph, I hope you'll thank everybody who's had a role in this, because I know it's been a long time coming and a lot of effort. So thanks. Final report is the discussion of the goals, initiatives, and outcomes that we earlier had a public hearing on. And for this, we've invited the chair and vice chair of both the Planning Commission and Economic Development Authority to meet with us today. This goes back to sort of an earlier meeting we had with the EDA, Planning Commission, and City Council, as well as representatives from major organizations, institutions in town. We then, as the process went on, asked both the Planning Commission and EDA to look at the draft goals and initiatives and to comment on them. And this is an opportunity for city council and the leadership of those two boards to, to get together. So I guess-
We're going to have the Planning Commission-
Yeah. Sarah, if you and, and Demetrius is, is Tom?
Well, we thought, we're the first-
Oh, okay. 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 Staff support for, thank you.
Memory, presidential memory for me.
Well, I want to, one, but thank you for, on behalf of city council, thank the Planning Commission for your participation in this process, the, the meeting this summer, as well as the discussions you've had. And we're really looking forward to interacting with you as, as we move forward with this.
Thank you also, Mayor Holman and members of council, for including us in the process. Ms. Stafford and I are honored to be here to discuss our recommendations with you. We're not going to go through them all. We'd like to highlight what we consider the major items, and then be happy to answer any questions.
Terrific.
So I'll, I'll start off with-
So I'll start off with, one of the things that you know is near and dear to my heart, that would be the Capital Landing Road bypass intersection, and in particular, a connection with a new entrance exit into Colonial Williamsburg. We really feel like this will make a significant difference for the Northeast Triangle. We've heard throughout the Northeast Triangle, commission meetings, as well as many times in planning commission, from business owners in the area, really feeling like this is a central investment that can't be made by business owners, but is necessary to really spur redevelopment in the area. And I think Planning Commission as a whole is very supportive of it, and we wanted to make sure that it was on the radar screen. Clearly, it is in the draft that's been circulated, and so we're happy to see it there. But we just wanted to reiterate that we think that's a very important piece of further encouraging redevelopment and revitalization of the Northeast Triangle. Or as we're supposed to start calling it now, half a quarter, as we rename it. Whatever you want to call it, we want that in.
Well, and I think, my sense is that there is some definite movement, both on Second Street and Capital Landing Road, that is really very positive for that sector. And I think the question is, sort of, what can the city do, particularly in infrastructure and other ways, to really keep that momentum going and develop what I think is one of the ideal places in the city to stay. If you want to visit Colonial Williamsburg, Bus Gardens, Jamestown, Yorktown, you have terrific access right there for all of that, so.
My husband spoke with, you know, Copper Fox Distillery was here for the Taste of the Arts, and my husband spoke and asked if there were a need for volunteers to help when they get their tour started. The Copper Fox.
Terrific.
All right. I guess the next item, which was brought up in our September 11th Community Forum, and then again, September 24th, was the idea of a fieldhouse, fieldhouse slash aquatic center that would hopefully satisfy maybe a third attraction to promote tourism here in Williamsburg. The commission felt that it was extremely important to preserve our current commercially zoned property. Most of that commercially zoned property is tourism related, hotels and restaurants. So we felt that the city should investigate further with James City County and the Alliance to see if it is feasible to build such a facility to enhance our economic base and thus protect our commercial quarters.
Could I ask you?
Yeah.
Demetrius, is that both a fieldhouse and an aquatic center, or is that either or?
We really didn't break it up. We sort of left it as fieldhouse slash aquatic center. We did receive a feasibility study from Mr. Kirkland from the Williamsburg Hotel Motel Association that I read, and I'm sure the other commissioners read also. And I'm sure you've also read that study, Ms. Newton. But it seemed that the combination was more, would be more effective than one or the other.
Thank you.
And we do have the report that was done for James City County on that.
Yes.
Provides a great deal of detailed information for analysis, as well as, you know, expected rates of return and what have you. So I think that's, you know, that provides a platform for this discussion to move forward from.
Well, I know the fieldhouse really isn't in our purview. We're trying to stick strictly with land use, but we felt that it affected the land use because of the commercial property that it could affect.
And in part, we asked you to address these things from your perspective, but not have that sort of, you know, official charge necessarily limit the way you think about things. So we appreciate you taking a broad interpretation of your.
Well, and that discussion sort of morphed into the country road, how that could be incorporated into a fieldhouse aquatic center also, by hosting different types of running events or cycling events, things of that nature.
I noticed in the draft, GIOs, a similar sentence to what Planning Commission had put in the recommendation, ended up under Recreation and Culture, but they have it under Economic Vitality. I wonder if it didn't better suit it under Economic Vitality.
I think we've got it in both places right now.
I think it is. And cross-referenced is what it is.
Cross-referenced, yeah. Because obviously.
But I think it needs to be probably both places.
Yeah.
And then another thing that we really wanted to emphasize on Economic Vitality, and the thing you know is on your radar screen, is the redevelopment of the Williamsburg Shopping Center. We did talk a lot about potentials for the shopping center when we redid the comprehensive plan and wanted to make sure that the way we saw that area going and the planning and the land use for that was appropriate for some sort of redevelopment that would include mixed retail and potentially residential. You know, obviously, want to keep the commercial there as much as we can, but recognizing that the best use for that area might be something that also increases the number of residents in that area to support the commercial. Thinking in terms of, you know, the projections for how much more residential could go into the downtown area, that there's not that many more bodies that can go into the downtown area, given the current availability of land and density restrictions that are in there. So, you know, bringing more bodies in, it seems that the Williamsburg Shopping Center might be a great place to think about putting some of those bodies. Obviously, you know, we recognize that this is something that none of the bodies in the city can do much about. This is really going to be a private redevelopment effort. But what we can do to make sure that the zoning and the land use planning is there to support good redevelopment, or, you know, eager to be participants with the council in making sure we can find a good reuse for that area.
And I'd like to add also, Mr. Mayor, if I may, on the redevelopment of the shopping center. In order for that redevelopment to be successful, we really need to increase the traffic counts into the midtown area. And it might be a good thing to use that Williamsburg Shopping Center property as an anchor for the Arts District that is in its infancy currently. And hopefully, we can get that moving to increase the vitality of the midtown area and sort of change the character of that area a little bit.
Thanks.
The next thing we discussed was the redevelopment of the Blatant Building. We had talked to commission about possibly, we want to keep the number, at least the same number of units that are currently there, but possibly using that property as a mixed use property to help increase the vibrancy and of the downtown area. Maybe incorporate some additional parking that could be used downtown. So we threw that idea around also. And under transportation, we discussed specifically bus shelters. And the reason the bus shelters came up, we felt that some property owners viewed the bus shelter as a detriment instead of a compliment to their property, especially the one in front of the Williamsburg Shopping Center. The grass is totally denuded in that area. There's trash overflowing, graffiti on the shelter itself. We feel the shelters need to be redesigned, maybe put in brick pavers or some kind of concrete area that would be more suitable to housing the folks while they're waiting for the bus to arrive. And those were pretty much our highlights.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Let me turn to council and see if they have any comments, suggestions, discussion.
Was there anything that you disagreed with?
Well, I think it was more just a, you know, where we wanted to put an emphasis on what we thought our priorities were. I mean, there doesn't seem like there's anything in here that we felt isn't a good idea, but it's clearly, there's a lot in here and how it all be done. So we really wanted to highlight the things that we felt would be the most important, either for, you know, achieving the ends that council has of, you know, economic vitality or preserving the character of the city, or in terms of a return on investment. So that's why we wanted to, we chose to highlight the ones that we did.
And plus, we tried to keep it, again, under our purview of the commission, of land use. We didn't really want to get into.
We didn't look at public safety.
You know, and things like that. We just, we just felt that we tried to constrict our comments to land use.
I think a lot of it did build too on, you know, our recent, it's hard to forget the comprehensive plan effort that we just went through. So a lot of it was, what did we discuss in the comprehensive plan that, you know, we couldn't make changes, but we wanted to sort of push forward to council to say these are things that we think really make a big difference.
Scott.
No, it kind of, it strikes me that a lot of what Planning Commission has talked about and presented in this document is kind of a continuation of that comprehensive planning process and the discussion that council's had over the years. And so I was pleased to see that we're still heading in a common ground, which I think really highlights the priorities of the community. And so I think this is a good exercise. Thank you both.
Judy. No. Let me just.
Scott changed his.
Yeah.
I'd just like to point out that, you know, if we go all the way back to that large community forum we had, this entire group, Planning Commission, EDA, council has been bouncing around these ideas, some of which had never seen the light of day. And they're slowly permeating all our documents and becoming embodied to city government, the ones that are sticking. So I think that's something to be proud of.
Time was spent. I think this has been a very good process in, you know, engaging both the Planning Commission and the EDA has reaped terrific rewards. But let me, I guess the bus shelter thing, I'd like to talk about this a little bit. I mean, it seems to me that our approach to this point has been that Williamsburg Air Transit is really responsible for bus shelters, and that is under the purview. But the question might become a policy question for the city is, do we want to play an additional role or supplemental role in the role that WADA is playing? And maybe that could be an agenda item for upcoming winter retreat of sort of, because it really is a policy question at this point, and the policy at this point has been, that's WADA's responsibility, you know, and we're over here. But do we want to take that on as something that the city participates in in a different way than it has in the past? So thank you for putting that on the agenda.
Mayor Holman, we just felt that it reflected poorly on the city with the way some of the bus stops are being maintained. And especially the high volume ones at the Williamsburg Shopping Center and various other stops throughout town, that's why we brought it up.
We also saw it as a way of really adding to the overall character of the city. You know, could those stops become someplace where there's also some exhibition of public art? So that not only is it serving that function, but it's also sort of tying together, you know, a theme for a particular area, so that the bus stops in the Arts District would look different from the bus stops that would be in other areas, but there would be something that had a common theme. And so using it really as a positive way of providing a marketing message in addition to increasing the comfort of people who are using transit and making transit a more attractive alternative.
Terrific. Joni, you're a representative to Williamsburg Air Transit.
I am, and I'm also the chairperson.
Yeah.
So this is a discussion that we've had at the Transit Board as well. And it's challenging to, we have a lot of shelter needs in the region, and to find locations where they can fit, and it makes sense. Sometimes working with private property owners can be challenging. The maintenance of them is an ongoing challenge that we, as a transit authority, struggle with. So I think these are all opportunities for improvement. So I think that the board would be more than willing to see what we can do. And maybe the relationship between the city and the transit authority regards to the sheltered in the city, we need to look at that and see what kind of opportunities out there in the future.
Terrific. Thanks.
It clearly comes down to funding.
Yep.
From somewhere.
That's the bottom line.
But I think, you know, what I'm hearing is that, you know, it is of a concern for lots of reasons. And I think there's lots of reasons why we should improve them, as Ms. Stafford just said. But if we want to increase that ridership to that form of transportation, then, you know, it's got to be a comfortable environment.
Yeah. And this goes back to Ms. Weber's sort of that first mile or first half mile question too, of sort of where do you think? So it gets that multimodal sort of question into. So I think that's, I think we have at least one item for our fall, winter retreat.
It also requires the balance of the need for more bus stop shelters and fewer more expensive shelters. So it's finding that right balance, and how do you bring other partners into the effort to provide greater care for the shelters that we have, so that it's not just WADA or not just the city, but maybe the private sector is working in partnership to help improve the shelters.
Terrific. Any other questions? Well, Demetrius and Sarah, thank you very much. Reed, thank you. Thank you all very much. And please convey our appreciation to the whole commission for your input to this point. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Economic Development Authority. Tom, welcome. Michelle, I'm glad to see you made it back from Richmond. But thank you all for being here.
Mr. Mayor and members of city council, on behalf of the EDA, I want to thank you for allowing us to present the synopsis of the EDA thoughts regarding the GIO update process. Bill Carr had a conflict come up recently, or he would be sitting here, so I apologize for that. You have in front of you an attachment E, which I won't go into today. I'm going to cover some high-level priorities. We had our September meeting at the EDA and ran out of time to cover the GIO update process. So we called a special session two weeks ago and spent three hours on very spirited and engaged debate. And we went through it structurally, and then we evolved into a brainstorming session. We like to think that all of the ideas that come out of the EDA are economically grounded, but you may find some on attachment E that you think aren't, that's okay, that's part of the brainstorming process. But I want to present to you four kind of high-level priorities and just tell you that we really believe in the GIO document. It's a very important document. It's a touchstone for our thoughts and our actions as we do things in the EDA. So let me launch into number one of the four, and that is to create a distinct physical identity in each of the city's commercial areas, whether that's downtown, midtown, Northeast Triangle, Arts District, et cetera. Number two is to focus on the potential for redevelopment in midtown. And we have a lot of overlap with the Planning Commission, and I think that's a good thing. But this potential for redevelopment may include a visioning process early on, which captures the best and highest uses in this area while maintaining community character, which is oh-so important. Number three priority would be to focus on redevelopment throughout the city, particularly in Northeast Triangle and downtown and within downtown, the Prince George Corridor. There's a lot going on in these areas right now. It's a coming together of the private sector and the public sector. We're coming out of an economic downturn, and we're starting to see things happen. We applaud that, and we need to stay focused on continuing to make things better. And along the Prince George Corridor, the college is engaged now. So we really have everyone singing the same tune, and we look for continued forward progress in those areas. And fourth is to focus on new developments in the Riverside Quarter Path area. It's our one area where we kind of have a new building development rather than redevelopment. And there are nice signs of life there, and to the extent that we can encourage and guide that, we should. So those are our four kind of high-level goals. I thank you for your time, and we'll take questions.
Great. Thank you, Tom. And again. And again, I hope you'll convey our thanks to the whole EDA. Paul, you're our liaison to the EDA. Do you want to be engaged with them more closely? Do you want to kick off with some-
I'd just like to add that not only did they run out of time at the September session, I think they ran out of time at the three hours in the October session. And I mean, it was a great deal of conversation. They just spoke to the, not just the level of interest or level of interest and engagement of members of the EDA in the process, but maybe perhaps also their enthusiasm for the document and what it was saying about the city and how the EDA, I believe it's fair to say, buys into the, if not every single line item in the GIO, the same level. The document in its totality is something I think the EDA is firmly behind. And so, what Mr. Gilman is talking about here is not that items on here are not of interest to the EDA, but just like with the Planning Commission, these are the ones that they think the city will get the most return on the effort invested. And sometimes it's effort and a lot of times it's money and more often than not, it's book.
Scott.
I'll unpack number four a little bit because we spent a lot of time talking about midtown and downtown, but Riverside is kind of, kind of hangs out there and there's a lot going on. But tell us a little about your vision for that.
Michelle, can you bring this up?
Sure. Well, as everyone knows, it is our last greenfield development in the city and that southern portion will be mixed use, will be commercial as well as residential. And we've seen residential break ground and of course, the hospital is there, but there's potential for a million-plus square feet of office space there. So, if we have, this is our opportunity to have Class A professional service office space in the city. And wow, that is a really tough market since 2008 in the whole economic development world, not just for Williamsburg, for a number of reasons, the recession, but also businesses are locating their employees differently and using space differently. You see more co-working space, more people working at home, telecommuting and businesses generally trying to cut down costs by not having large office spaces. So, we go into it with our eyes open, but this is our opportunity to house those type of back office professional services, maybe even regional headquarters that could locate in a multi-story building that really doesn't fit anywhere else in the city. So, this is our chance. We work very closely with Riverside and Bill Kinney. We submitted the property a handful of times for projects that have come through Richmond, through the state to try to compete on that level. And it's been one of the first times we've been able to do that because we have the product there. So, that's very exciting. While it's exciting, we also realize that it is challenging and we're doing what we can, working with that private partner. So, when we go on marketing missions, whenever we see anyone from the state or Hampton Rose Economic Development Alliance, we remind them we have this beautiful product here that's quite attractive, so.
Thank you.
Done.
Thank you both for coming and Chairman Gilman, appreciate your focused discussion on this and certainly much more focused than it was when I was chair many years ago. The EDA, Rebecca's EDA then. We talk about, you presented the thought of redevelopment, you know, in the midtown or downtown or wherever. What about what stimulates that redevelopment? Any discussion on, you know, which comes first, that chicken or the egg? And how do you get the redevelopment if some other elements aren't in place? And is there an opportunity for us as a city to work on those other elements that might stimulate those redevelopment efforts?
It's a very, very question. It's not an easy answer. It's certainly a chicken and egg, as you put it. As I said, a lot of our discussion within the EDA is, you know, which leads and which follows. So, depending upon the specific project we're talking about, that's what our chatter is all about and how to move forward. Again, using the GIOs as a touchstone for that.
Yeah. Well, and I know it's a complicated discussion and so, I think it's one that we all have in and around our own discussion tables. But I think it's important that when we, when we look at these opportunities, are the right elements in place? And I think when we talk about transportation, for example, and you mentioned it in your document, the intersection of bypass and Capellini Road, when that becomes a priority, then redevelopment starts to happen, I think. I think that almost intersections and road improvements have to happen before we can really expect some real redevelopment. And so, prioritizing those in our CIP, which is another document we'll all be working on in a couple of months, is going to be a challenge for us.
If I might add to that, I think there was also a fair amount of discussion about how to position the municipal infrastructure investment in the right way at the right time so that it stimulates redevelopment as opposed to encouraging no action and helping to sustain underutilized development. And that's where I think there was probably the most back and forth. And it becomes complicated to discuss that on any particular project and impossible to have a meaningful citywide conversation. But I think you're right that one great example that we feel has worked very well is the activity that's taking place along the Prince George Corridor where you have the city expressing an interest in investing in the infrastructure in the corridor. You had property owners that have had longstanding interest in doing something to their property and the two were able to come together at a similar time to have a far greater impact than either would have had on their own. And so, what we see on Second Street where businesses have started to invest in their property, it makes more sense then for the city to come in and change the priorities to help do things like put the wiring underground, to give those businesses who've invested already in themselves a further boost and leg up so that they're better positioned to succeed. But the timing was a little bit different in each of those. And so, there's no one recipe for success. And so, I think as Mr. Gilman said, it's complicated.
I think the key is in part, what we're doing right now is one part of that key is to create an environment and mechanisms whereby you can be flexible and you can get input from as broad of a spectrum of the community as possible so that when opportunities come, you can marshal the elements together to help make it happen. So, I think, you know, one thing I'm really pleased with this sort of GIO process this time around is the broad involvement because it really does create that communication and create the mechanisms that will allow us to be flexible when we need to be flexible. So, I think that's really important.
Yes, I agree. I think that is ultimately the recipe that's going to make all of these things happen is this process that we're going through today is, you know, we're now talking about things whereas if a developer might have said in the past, "Well, you know, I'm not ready to make an investment here because maybe the community's or the city's not behind me," or whatever that objection may be. I think we're removing those bound, those obstructions.
And so, the extension of the conversation to the midtown area revolved around sending the right signals to the development community about what the city's collective vision is for that area so that somebody who's considering a significant investment in property and then an even greater investment in redevelopment of that property comes into that with eyes wide open about what the city wants. And if it matches what they think is going to work in the private sector, we have a much greater chance of working together collaboratively and overall a successful development that meets the needs and desires of the community. So, I do think that sending the right signal about what the city is looking for is an important element, but flexibility is definitely-
Got to be nimble.
I'll back that up with a specific instance. Just on Tuesday, I talked to a fellow who had interacted with the city just after our, not the most recent comprehensive plan, but the one before. And it was almost as if he didn't believe that I was on City Council and I was telling him the things that happened in the most recent comprehensive plan. So, I couldn't agree more that it's absolutely imperative to communicate where we are today and what our collective vision is.
Okay. Any other comments? Tom, Michelle, thank you very much and I hope again, you'll convey to the EDA our appreciation for all the effort you guys have put into this process. Thanks. Where do we go from here, Jack? Why don't you-
We will, we will take what we've heard today, both in the earlier public hearing, these conversations. We'll go back, but when I say we, I'm talking about the city staff members that have been working on this, includes all the department heads and other folks in the city as well, and try to refine, realign, make changes as we see. What we'll do is then send out a draft two of the document. I can't give you a precise date on that, but as soon as we can. And so, and then again, put that out online as well as going to everyone that spoke here today and then again, ask for some more feedback on that. Our goal is to get back to you at the work session in November, whatever draft were at that point and then so that that meeting, you'll say we're ready to adopt or we're not. And then the adoption would take place in the council meeting in November.
Thanks. We've been expressing thanks to Planning Commission and EDA for their involvement, but I hope you will, you know, convey our appreciation to department heads. I think that the process this year has been a little bit different in the past and they have been much more active and thanks to your leadership there. And I know a lot of work has gone into this by department heads and staff throughout the city and I think we're getting a document that shows that. So, I hope you'll convey council's thanks to department heads and staff for all they've put into this.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. City attorney reports, I believe?
Nothing today.
Okay. Scheduled meetings, Jack? Anything in particular?
I don't believe I have anything in particular to point out.
No unfinished business? Any new business?
I don't want this falls into new business, but since we didn't have the work session, we weren't able to share items of information. Just two things I wanted to pass along. One, it relates to the EDA and it's just in the beginning stages of looking at a program to work with businesses on providing more bike racks throughout the city, but that's something that's still being, it's in the initial stages, but working in partnership with those businesses to help get that public-private investment and encourage more people to use active transportation. The second is, relates to the healthy community effort. One, we did, we met several times on the subcommittee. We had an intern who did some groundwork. And then one of the things that I've been waiting for is the VML's establishment of a structure that's similar to what they did with the Go Green Initiative. And at the VML meeting this past weekend, it wasn't a VML representative, but it was somebody from the Healthy Eating, Active Living Coalition who said that they are working with VML and they expect to roll out a similar structure for community health in the next, well, it's a little ambiguous, but hopefully, Ms. Walton, you have-
It's ambiguous.
But it will be soon as we were promised. And then once that happens, I think we'd be in a very good position to move forward where the city can then flush out its initiatives. A number, I must admit, I think we do a lot of things already that we could clearly identify, just as we did with the green community. We do a lot that we can bring under an umbrella, but it can still reside in its current area. So, that's-
We look forward to that. You and Jody and Jerry attended VML this past weekend. Anything inside that particular report or?
I would say that the speaker on Tuesday morning was eye-opening. Just the, it's hard for me to write at this point, give you a recap of what he said because he was rather dramatic in his presentation. But it really had to do with how communities communicate with the residents and how we should be prepared for major changes in the way that happens and what the use of technology is going to do to change individual lives, community lives and society as a whole. If half of what he said is accurate, we better hold on because, and so, the trick is going to be getting ahead of the curve in those areas where it's important to the city to be on the leading edge of technology. Again, I think Williamsburg has done a good job, but it's going to be a quick ride.
Change. And that might be useful input to the process for a search for a new communication specialist for the city. So, maybe you can-
Might have to bring Jody here.
Yeah. Jody, Jerry, anything else?
I just heard the speaker was Dr. Lowell Catlett from New Mexico State University and he was an economist and futurist. And he gave you a lot of information and data, but it was all very positive. And a lot of times you hear speakers and it's, you know, the sky's falling kind of approach, but he gave a lot of really, I think, good positive information about just how quickly our communities are changing and technology and really how that impacts people's lives and how that's going to impact our communities and good governance. And so, I think his work and the work of people like Rebecca Ryan are going to be important as we sort of plan and prepare for the future. And that was really his message. You know, we may not be able to in 100% certainty to predict the future, but we should be able to prepare as best we can based on what we know now.
And he also tried to debunk the myth that economists were created so why the man has somebody to make fun of?
I hope he did a good job in that. Well, thank you all for attending that and that can be useful input to the search process and things. Okay. Our final agenda item for the open part of meeting is open forum a time when anyone who wishes to address City Council on any matter may do so. I have three speakers cards and then anyone else who wishes to speak can come forward. The first speaker's card I have is Philip Christoferson. If you'd come up and give us your address.
May I say how impressed I am with the government? I feel very secure for our future. Thank you, gentlemen, for taking time to see. I'm here more about my wife and how the city addresses citizens and the access to their property. I rent at 602 Capital Landing and I was watching in the, excuse me, I'm still blind. I was watching in the, on the web, I like to follow you a lot, it's one of my hobbies, the statements made by Ms. Carrie Flanagan in May where she had several incidences where they accessed the property kind of abruptly and they're kind of abrasive to it. I had the same problems at 602 Capital Landing a few years back. And the reason I address this is because my wife is a victim of a very violent home invasion crime, so it upsets her greatly. And what I was hoping to change is maybe a policy or the way that you approach us. So, for me, what it was, was we took, I took the time out of my day because I really wanted to address this issue. It was very important to me personally is I felt a little bit like I was caught between the city and policies that you were making on how you come up there. There were several incidences where you came onto my property and I wasn't expecting you. And I had this little, small little nook behind the house where nobody ever comes and I was asleep one day and chef hours are very long. We work really odd hours. And there were two gentlemen back there and they were having a discussion about the house and it has to do between you and the landlord. It doesn't really have anything to do with me personally or my house, but we didn't know what was going on. I was actually getting ready to dial 911 because I didn't know why they were there. And so, that incident passed and they, I went out there and I addressed them, they identified themselves and that went without much more incident there. They came a second time, did the same thing, they're all up on my porch. And that throws me off a little bit. I was a little concerned about that. And then I saw a whole lot of drive-bys coming by all the time. And my wife, she's nervous, okay? She just has that tendency. So, I didn't really think too much about it until I saw Ms. Carrie's statements. And then I started thinking about all the citizens here. I think all they want to do is expect a policy change on how you let us know that you're coming. It was quite a lot. The main thing I really wanted to point out was that we don't, we can't identify them. They're not, they're not dressed in uniforms, we're not expecting them to come. And it did feel like, a little bit like harassment. I felt like I was caught between the city and the landlord in a dispute of some sort because I've never really seen you drive by that many times. But I would say it was over 20 visits and I'm not home a lot. So, if I saw 20 visits, I'm thinking there were more. So, and that bothered me a lot. In between the time that it took place, it was over maybe four months where I saw the city maybe 60 times and three verbal communications. And one communication was rather strange from one of the inspectors was that he told me that my landlord was rich and he could afford these repairs. He started to explain to me how he owned planes and things and nothing that I really cared about. It got really awkward and I felt in an awkward place. So, I sent an email and I was asking my landlord to be my advocate for this problem. But when I see Ms. Carrie's statements, I feel that my landlord hasn't done a very good job as an advocate for us as citizens as to how you address the property. All I'm looking for is maybe a communication of some sort before you come on because the areas where they approached were very unusual. I've never seen people back there. You know how we have a rainforest, a Williamsburg rainforest? You can't even get back there. You have to kind of tromp and go through all the giant weeds and things that we have back there. And so, I really wanted to represent my wife. She wrote a letter, so I just was hoping I- She wrote a letter, so I just was hoping I could put this into the record for you to read. I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
And it was more of a statement for her. And I appreciate your time, and I thank you very much, gentlemen. It's a very, it was a very important thing for me. So I was just asking if we could incite a different policy for this approach? And that was about the whole statement.
Thank you. And I'll ask Jack Tuttle to please have a discussion and see what can be done.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Philip. The next speaker's card I have is John Whitley.
Welcome. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I'm John Whitley. I live at 110 Governor Berkeley Road. I want to start off with something just really awesomely exciting, pleasant, and hopeful, and maybe even futuristic. I heard the chairperson of the Planning Commission make reference to the Williamsburg Shopping Center and how it could become that wonderful anchor for the arts district. You've heard me say to you before, and definitely Michelle has because she's been a part of what we've been doing with this, about the Trades, Crafts, and Arts Initiative. As I look at that shopping center area, as it just, the light came on, it said, "Might just be the great spot for the world heritage center for trades, crafts, and arts." As you know, four separate groups of students last semester at the College of William and Maryan School of Business did feasibility studies as to is Trades, Crafts, and Arts Initiative economically feasible, pursuing it as an economic development proposition, each determined that it is. Let me move to something that I hadn't really planned to approach in this manner, but to let it more be a follow-up to the email that I sent you today. I'm so pleased with the good work of Mr. Clayton in moving to traffic calming measures on Governor Berkeley Road. As you know, and as he cited, we, the residents, met with Chief Slogi, Mr. Clayton, and Mr. Tuttle, at which time through good dialogue, it arrived that there were two probably viable, definitely viable solutions to these issues. One being the argument in fine sign. And we know the effects of signs often aren't all that we hoped that they would be. So pleased that that is moving forward. The other addressed the issue of speed humps. I even had the pleasure of going over to Newtown and taking some pictures, and I hope you got them, Dan, of the speed hump there in Newtown and how it's not intrusive, but appearance is effective. What's bothering me is that while seated here, and after even speaking to members of staff and those that I spoke, have referenced, that you know full well that Skipworth Farms Neighborhood Association has washed its hands of any issues related to traffic safety on Governor Berkeley Road. I also note that we are moving forward with the augmented sign, which is just, I'm greatly appreciative of that. But I heard Mr. Tuttle say that we're not going to do anything else until we check with the entire neighborhood and to see if the entire neighborhood, Skipworth Farms, feels that it's appropriate. Now, the Skipworth Farms Neighborhood Association, Jack, has washed their hands of Governor Berkeley Road. The residents have said, "We plead before you, all of you, council and staff, to implement interventions that will assure the safety of children and adults on that street." This is not a Skipworth Farms Neighborhood Association or neighborhood issue. It's an issue of the residents of Governor Berkeley Road. And that was the point of agreement that we entered into when we, in concert with staff, said augmented sign fines are appropriate and speed humps are appropriate, knowing full well that the latter is something that has to be worked in to see appropriateness and location and all of that. Enough about that. I'm disappointed because I hear resistance, I hear a pushback, and I hope, Jack, that I'm mistaken. One death, just one death, just one injury, that nobody wants that on his or her legacy. Okay, put that aside for a moment, and let me share with you, as I looked at your legislative agenda. You spoke very informally and almost definitively about the Commonwealth and its financial status. You and I know that every single day you sit there, $5 million are returned to the federal government that could be coming into the Commonwealth if we supported expansion of Medicaid. Now, I know it doesn't have anything directly to do with our budgeting, but it's something that I was really hopeful that you might just slightly hint, that you as a body, that we as a city, encourage the members of the General Assembly to support the expansion of Medicaid. Its benefits would accrue greatly to our Commonwealth. You know that just in Wise County, in Lee County, small hospital there just closed. And on occasion the other evening, talking to Lieutenant Governor Ralph Northen, he's talking about the hospital on Eastern Shore. They're right at that teetering point. And here we are pushing away $5 million a day that could be coming to the Commonwealth if we supported Medicaid expansion. 400,000 people in the Commonwealth are uninsured that could be insured. 16,000 vets right in our immediate area could be positively impacted. And the economic development piece is that 30,000 new jobs in the healthcare industry could be created if we had Medicaid expansion in the Commonwealth. Let's land on a positive note. God, I really appreciated the GIO process, the transparency, the involvement. There's not a citizen in this city who has, can have a second of complaint about not having total access, total opportunity for input. I really do appreciate your leadership, and I ask that you do what you can for us. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Final card I have is Gary Shelley. Welcome.
My name is Gary Shelley. I live at 205 Indian Springs Road. I have a prepared statement here, but before I start, I like to speak off the cuff just a little bit, which I'm not exactly prepared for. But I'd like to put on the record that I am the landlord of the property that Mr. Christensen just referenced, 602 Capelany Road. I'm also the property owner of Ms. Carrie Flanagan's former residence, which she spoke about in May. And as such, I was the recipient of their anger and their hurt and their feelings of being second-class citizens and their feelings of harassment that came from the actions of the city, the illegal intrusion on the property. And I must say that both of them were very grateful to me as Mr. Christensen for advocating for them. Now, I'll get to my prepared statement now. At both the May and the June City Council meetings, I asked our council to elect someone other than you, Mayor, to be our next mayor. I cautioned the council that their decision defines them. You and your fellow councilmen did not heed my request, and on July 1st, you were once again selected to be the town's mayor. And so be it. You've heard me say that the public can forgive mistakes, but we absolutely demand honesty, accountability, open government, and responsiveness. I have stood here at this podium and remarked how you have created a culture where our officials do not hold themselves or each other accountable. I have stated that the buck stops nowhere near you, and the accountability is anathema to you. One doesn't need to look very hard to see how accurate my criticisms are. In May, Ms. Carrie Flanagan, a former William and Mary student, about to leave Williamsburg after living here for eight years, spoke in this room and told you about multiple trespassing incidents by city employees on her property and how unsettling as a single woman these were to her. She very nicely suggested that this is something you might want to look into, and your response was that you regretted her unfortunate experience and that you would try to, and that you try to make everyone feel equal. Then you dismissed her. In July, I spoke at this podium and noted how insincere your response was. Of course you regretted her unfortunate experience. Your employee got caught, but you offered no apology. And I also noted that when a friend of yours complained about a student party, you were quick to respond, that you would not only notify the Neighborhood Relations Committee, but that you would notify the police, and on top of that, you promised to get back with him. That you would treat your friend one way and a student another is no surprise to anyone who has watched your conduct over the years. At the July meeting, I asked a dozen questions relating to the trespassing incident, including what is city policy regarding where your employees can access a property. Mayor, were you aware of what that policy is? If so, why didn't you tell us at that time? You followed up on none of my legitimate concerns. So much for treating everyone equally. At the September meeting, I spoke about how this incident was not only an outrageous violation by the city of Miss Flanagan's reasonable expectation of privacy, but yet another unmasking of how the city and its officials operate. I read to you not one, but two emails that I sent to the city at the time of the trespassing, which mentioned that the incident caused Ms. Flanagan to become distraught. In the email, I specifically noted the city's refusal to communicate and that we will listen only if you will talk. And I further noted that it is now evident that I am the one who for years has been making the effort to communicate, but as with numerous other issues, the city has been, but as with numerous other issues, the city has been and remains frustratingly uncooperative and unresponsive. This attitude comes directly from our city leadership, of which you are the most responsible. In open forum, I ask you a couple of pretty simple and straightforward questions, including whether or not the incident of a Miss Flanagan's was the only time the city has trespassed in private property, or have there been other instances? I also asked, how is it possible that our city manager was not notified that a citizen had filed a complaint to the police against one of our city's employees? You chose not to respond to these concerns, but I'm asking you once again to address Mr. Mayor, how would you feel if you were a young woman, living alone, and there were multiple intrusions on your property by unauthorized people? Mr. Mayor, how would you feel, and this should resonate very well with Councilwoman Nudson, how would you feel if you were a grandmother and there were multiple illegal intrusions on your property triggering memories of a brutal assault by an armed assailant? How would you feel if complaints to your city leaders went unheeded? How would you feel if the mayor of your town makes no response to these concerns? How would you feel if the mayor has been enthusiastically endorsed by his fellow councilman? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Anyone else wish to address council on any matter? If not, I think that brings us to the conclusion of our open meeting. We'll take a five-minute break and come back into closed session.
May I make a motion?
Make a motion.
Sorry, I was a little delinquent there. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing two personnel matters per Subparagraph 1 concerning appointments and employee succession, and one property matter per Subparagraph 3, acquisition of property for public purposes, which discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect bargaining or negotiation strategy of a public body.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Jerry?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. We'll take a five-minute recess and come back into closed session. Thank you all very much.